Calling the meeting to order. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the Board's secretary. Official action may be taken at the following matters before this board. Fire exits are located on the east and west side of council chambers as well as on the back of the building. I will ask everyone with a cellphone or another device to kindly silence it, silence your device during the duration of this meeting. This meeting is being recorded by AP-TV and I am asking that, we have been asked to ensure that the, all of the professionals and all the board members and the public to be sure to speak into the microphone because we've had some concerns about some people not being able to hear things. So we've been asked to make sure that we do then and be extra mindful today and every day. Please join me for pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance?
The United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Beekman, will you do the roll call?
Sure. Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman Maureen Clayton.
Here.
James Bonanno.
Just step back.
Oh, okay. He's here, I know. Jim Henry.
Here.
Jennifer Souter.
Here.
Alexis Taylor.
Here.
Eric Calippo.
Here.
Daniel Schenmaio.
Here.
Did I do a better job than I did?
Shanahan.
Oh, Shanahan. Juanita Barnes. Rick Lambert's absent. And Barbara Kerzak.
Do we have, um, do we have any members that have to look at, to review any of the proceedings? Alexis, or no?
So I'm not eligible to vote on the application.
Okay.
So Alexis can deliberate tonight, but she won't be able to vote if there's a vote to be taken.
Okay. For this, for the first application.
For the first application, correct.
Okay. Okay, um, our first applicant is JLD Investments Group. Come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you so much. Matthew Posada of a law firm, Sales Commissar and Gross, on behalf of the applicant, JLD Investment LLC for this application, which is an application for major subdivision approval, but only preliminary approval at this stage. Make do?
Sure.
Thank you. As I said before, this is a subdivision application. What we're looking to do here for the subject site is to subdivide the existing lot into six fully conforming lots. At the last hearing before this board, we heard testimony from our engineer, our planner, and also our historical architect, who confirmed that this is a fully conforming subdivision application, and there are no specific historical designations that would thwart development. At the conclusion of last hearing, the board felt uncomfortable moving forward with a vote until after they heard title review. With that being said, it was requested by the board to have an expert come back before this board to discuss the title review and what exactly those facts, findings, and conclusions were, at which time the board advised that it would be acceptable to have someone from the law firm, Sales Commissar and Gross, provide that testimony, provided again that they could be qualified as an expert in title review. In addition, this board had also asked for two required, well, one other requirement, I should say. Another requirement would be to provide the actual title to the municipality 48 hours before this hearing. I can confirm that we did do that on Thursday, July 21st, by hard copy and also electronic copy. We provided the title package to this municipality. And tonight, I have my colleague and also resident of the city of Asbury Park here and available to do the direct examination on title review and also be available for cross-examination and any questions from either the board or the public.
Okay.
So if I may, I'd like to call my first and my only witness tonight, Mr. Tom Pearl.
Madam Chair, I did have an opportunity to speak with one of the objectors. He would just like to put on the record some objections to, and I'm sorry, your partner's name?
Tom Pearl.
To Mr. Pearl testifying this evening. Mr. DeSeno is here and he has to put, place on the record, and I think the record has to make it clear what he wants him to suggest.
Sure.
Okay. Mr. DeSeno?
Good evening, everyone. Last hearing, we were told that we would come back for basically, it was two sorts of experts' testimony. One, from someone who could tell us whether James Bradley was acting as, in the public's interest or his own interest when he wrote that deed, because it was my contention that he was actually acting as the government. The second was whether or not the deed restrictions would apply to this case. You asked for expert testimony, and I recall you saying, "Have your expert witnesses' reports filed no later than Monday." And I waited till today and I was able to confirm with the applicant's attorney that they did not hire any expert on those issues. What they did was issued their title binder and is going to have a partner in their firm act as an expert witness and talk about the title binder. My objection has to do with the fact that it is illegal. I'll say that again, illegal, for an attorney in a fact-finding proceeding to call a member of his own firm as an expert witness. And I will cite for you Rules of Professional Conduct 3.7 and 1.7, which specifically state that other than for matters that are completely within the control of that lawyer, for instance, how much did he bill, or what was the chain of custody for evidence, things uniquely in his, in his knowledge, he can't testify in a case where his firm is representing someone. And more importantly, if we look at Rules 1.7 and 1.8, Rules of Professional Conduct, he's got a duty of loyalty to his client. If he's got a duty of loyalties to his client, he's not permitted to give any testimony that is contrary to his client's interest. That's why he's got a conflict. And as the appellate division said, the reason, and I'm going to cite a case, Escobar versus Mazie, 460 New Jersey, Super 520, the court said, "The reason you don't allow this is because this board, any fact-finding board, won't be able to tell during that testimony whether he's testifying to you as someone who's trying to objectively giving you facts or if he's testifying as an advocate for his client." The two mix, so much so, that the court's already ruled, "You'll be unable to know the difference." So they've actually ruled that Mr. Posada can't call Mr. Pearl. It's against the law and it's an ethics violation to do so. And every lawyer with a license in this room is obligated, when they see an ethics violation, to point it out and report it. And this body should not go against the law and allow this counsel to call his partner as an expert witness on his own case, even as a matter of common sense. That doesn't make sense. You don't call an advocate as a disinterested expert witness. So the bottom line is, you gave them a task, they ignored it. They want to say, "We're not doing that thing that you asked us to do. We're just going to talk about the title work. The end." And I think that gives you the obligation to say, "If you didn't do what we asked, if you didn't bring expert witnesses, we gave you the chance, then you failed to meet your burden and you've got to vote this application down." And I ask that somebody make a motion to not allow that testimony because it's against the law. Thank you.
If I may, I just have three bullet points. Number one was, the applicant provided the title as was requested by this board, and we provided it within 48 hours, actually exceeded 48 hours, to satisfy the open request, but more importantly, to give an opportunity for the board and the board professions and the public to have opportunity to read the title like any other individual would have been able to, including ourselves. Number two, we had asked the board whether or not it would be acceptable to have a member from my law firm who I could qualify as an expert in title review, if that would be satisfactory to move forward. And this board advised that that was acceptable. At no point did we say we were going to get a third-party professional report to review the title. We had talked to our title agent. She did do a review, but she did feel uncomfortable coming as a witness to provide testimony. And that was why we were left with the conclusion of Pearl offering a colleague to come to this board to provide testimony, which was acceptable to this board as of last week. And number three, I want to point to the board's attention that this is the textbook definition of ultra-virus. This is a private restriction. This is a public land use board to regulate municipal zoning regulations. This is a private matter. It is not within the jurisdiction of this board. What is a requirement, though, is when we do move forward, if we move forward residential development, that any covenants restrictions or easements would have to be on those surveys or building plans. So you would see if there is any type of impediment, if you will. But at the end of the day, it is a private agreement between private parties. Thank you.
The only thing I would say, and I totally agree with your point number two. You did say that and I even agree. But if it's being pointed out to me now by another attorney that it may not be legal, I'm not an attorney. Nobody up here is an attorney. So if it is against the law, I want our attorney to give us advice now.
Well, I'll be honest with you. Without having the opportunity to investigate it and look at my own research on it, I can't tell you whether it is or not tonight. I'd have to research it to determine whether it is or not. You know, I, not everything we do, we know right off the top of our heads, so it requires research sometimes to make a determination. So I could, I could tell you right now, I can't make that determination for you as to whether it is or is not legal or not legal, that the, that an attorney in the firm can testify about the title work.
And your recommendation is to proceed?
No, I, I mean, I think my recommendation would be that the applicant should look into whether this is a violation. If the board wants me to research that, I can certainly research that, but if this is an ethical violation, then we could not proceed. And without being able to say yes or no, it would have been nice to know ahead of time that this was an issue, so this, this board could get the proper advice not five minutes before the meeting. But, you know, that's, unfortunately, that's the decision that, that was made as to how it was going to be brought forth. And so we're stuck at this point, and I don't, I can't give you an answer without research.
Well, if we have, if we have any doubt as to whether or not ethically we can do this, I don't see how, from that perspective, we can proceed when you're talking about an ethics violation. Because that's certainly not something that our board would agree to.
I agree.
No. They've got to have someone provide a report.
So I, I think unfortunately, we're stuck in a conundrum of delaying this another cycle.
But can we, can we just have another discussion about this, okay? I get the ethical piece of this. Okay? Let's say, let's say that we had gotten past that, okay? This board, can they make a decision and state in their recommendations, they say, "You know what? If we're going to approve or deny this, either way, we are not making any finding on whether or not this title is, is, is it a restriction or is it not a restriction?" Can we say that in our finding and in our deliberation and just say that? And that pretty much says, "You know what? We approve or we don't approve." But that doesn't mean that we've made any decision, which is not really within our purview to make a decision on a deed.
So the dilemma that you have is the objection that has been raised, not only this evening, but also at the last hearing, was that is, was this a governmental restriction that would bind this board, or is this a private restriction that would not bind this board? And the purpose of the testimony is to address that issue, in addition to explaining what the restrictions are relative to the properties.
And we can't hear that if there is an ethical violation.
We can't hear that if the witness that would testify would result in an ethical violation.
Okay. Okay. Then it, based on, on our counsel recommendations, we cannot proceed with a potential ethical violation. I don't see how this, this board would agree to that. So where do we go from here?
Well, as was indicated at the last hearing, we do need testimony about the title report. That testimony, if in fact this is an ethical violation, that testimony has to be from someone other than a member of the applicant's attorney's firm.
If I may?
Certainly.
I was never, whether it's an ethical violation or not, I was never very comfortable with allowing them to bring in someone from their firm. That I wanted, I made God living as an independent expert witness, and that's what I wanted here, an independent, unbiased, expert witness that didn't have a dog in the fight.
And I'm in agreement with that, though I also felt the same way. The one fault, I did not understand that this was not going to be an independent expert witness, but rather one that was going to work for the applicant's firm.
Okay. So then it's, then it sounds as though that we have to deal with the fact that we would need a witness that is not of the firm, whether it's ethical or not ethical, to be able to speak to this issue. An independent witness.
Respectfully, we were given clear direction at the last hearing that we were allowed to move forward.
We are not denying that.
And
We are not denying that.
If you would, if you would, I'd like to voir dire my colleague and also my expert witness to explain his role and why this is not unethical, why this is not unethical, yeah.
But even, just, just to be clear, that even, even if this testimony does, is stated, we cannot make any decisions. Okay? Because we're dealing with an ethical versus a non-ethical issue. We're on the fence on that right now. We don't know if it's ethical or not ethical, based on our attorney's statements. So we cannot, we, whatever, if we allow you to testify, you can testify, but that doesn't mean that we're going to be making a decision tonight.
Can I request a five-minute recess?
Sure.
Thank you.
A motion?
Is that fair, is that fair to say, Mr. Beekman?
By motion to grant the recess?
Oh, yeah, we should, by motion, grant the recess.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Can I get a roll call?
Yes, Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman Maureen Clayton.
Here.
James Bonanno.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Jennifer Souter.
Here.
Alexis Taylor.
Here.
Eric Calippo.
Here.
Daniel Schenmaio.
Here.
And Barbara Kerzak.
Here. Okay. You're back.
Thank you. So the first question I have for this board, if we were to adjourn this matter, what would be the next scheduled available date?
It would be next Monday, 8/1.
8/1.
That's our next opening.
And then my second question I would have for this board is, can you please list out an exhaustive list of exactly what you would like to see the applicant come back, so that we wouldn't have to appear for a fifth time? I say the most respectful way possible, as you can imagine, there's been multiple hearings for a fully conforming application, and we just want to make sure we understand the roadmap.
If you'd like to take that, Mr. Beekman?
So the roadmap is, the door was open regarding a question about title, and we need testimony relative to the title report and how that affects the proposed development and the proposed subdivision. And that testimony needs to be by an expert in title, that can be qualified in title, and based upon the events this evening, that expert probably should not be someone from your firm.
Understood. And just for clarification purposes, as stated at the last hearing, the reason why we ended up at my law firm for Pearl offering our expert witness was because of the reason that our title agent did not want to provide testimony. So with that being said, if I were to get another attorney, similar to my colleague, who does this for a living at a separate office that has no relation to Sales Commissar and Gross, would that be satisfactory?
No. Well, what, who is, who is an expert in this? It's a title attorney, no?
It would be someone who handles real estate and title work in general, in reliance on the title report. I can't tell you who that witness is, Mr. Posada, but obviously, you have the obligation for foundation, you have the obligation for credibility and all those things. So if that helps with the direction, that's about as far as I can go. You know, it's, it's your, it's your application, your client's application.
Understood.
Mr. Beekman, if I may, would such a person be treated as any other expert? In other words, a lawyer who, who practices in that field, he would come in and testify as an expert and his testimony would be given the same weight as any other expert, I would assume.
Well, you know, the applicant would have to voir dire his expert, like any other application that we have, especially, especially if it's someone who the board's not familiar with, and especially in this circumstance, it's a different area of expertise that we commonly do not see.
Exactly. Treat it as any other expert.
Right.
I mean, I've typically heard, you know, in cases that have, where you have title experts, and usually, there are title officers and an expert.
It could be, it could be an attorney who handles, you know, significant real estate title work, those kinds of things, whether it be they, you know, address title claims, actions. You know, I can't say exactly what the board can anticipate the applicant is going, who the applicant is going to bring in, but at the end of the day, the applicant is going to have to voir dire the witness, the board's going to have to determine credibility like they do with any other witness, and the public would have an opportunity to cross-examine that witness, as well as present their own witness, again, relative only to the title issues, because that seems to be the only issue that is outstanding in the application at this time.
And that would be just about whether it's a private or governmental restrictions?
Correct.
Is that clear? Are you okay?
Yes.
Okay. One other thing that I'd just like to bring up, what happened today regarding the bringing up of the ethics violation, I would hope that something like that, that we find out about this, our attorney does not find out about it five minutes before the meeting starts. We don't want that to happen again. You know Mr. Beekman's number. You know how to call him. So I would expect that if you have any objections that you have questions about, we're going to bring something like that, which will bring this meeting to a halt, I would expect that, that give us the courtesy as a board and give Mr. Beekman the courtesy to give us some time, so that they know ahead of time.
If that was addressed, then may I ask Ms. Alonso to detail in my defense, my attempts to give this to the board and her advice to me, that she wouldn't take it because I could bring it tonight.
All right, so can we have a motion to carry this application to August 1st?
And may we be first on the agenda?
You are one.
Right now.
You are one and only. So you are first?
Any issue? No.
And no, 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 no additional notice?
Notice, be guarded. Thank you.
Okay?
And if I could just make one comment, Barbara Kerzak, just based on what you said.
Of course you may.
Members of the public, I represent this board. I do not represent anyone from the public. You cannot call me for legal advice relative to this application. I represent the board and the board only. What Ms. Kerzak was talking about is, based upon if there's going to be some type of objection that, objection that is going to cause this application to be delayed further, we're asking for a courtesy heads-up because it's not fair to the applicant, it's not fair to the members of our board, who are all volunteers, and it's not fair to counsel for the board to come here to find out that there's going to be an objection. So I want that, to make sure that that's clear, but I cannot give you legal advice. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to?
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, do we have a motion to?
To.
To carry.
All right. Second, to carry. All right, all, all in favor? Aye. Okay. All right, so we're going to get a motion. Who did it? Daniel, you's the number one?
Barbie, second.
I did.
For the record, again, that meeting is at 7:00 on August 1st.
7:00, August 1st, normal meeting.
Does it have all in favor?
Okay. Yeah. We're still having our meeting.
Yes.
We're still in session. Yeah. Okay, who's up next? Mr. Karas? Ready?
Members of the public, please leave the chamber.
Please, members of the public, please. Members of the public, if you're not interested in the next application, please move on.
Is it still time of the meeting?
7:00, it's a normal planning board meeting, 7:00 next Monday.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is more like, look at all these.
I've come up here, cleared out.
Don't take it very quickly.
I mean, maybe we should ask him instead.
I'm sure on my application.
Are all your witnesses here, Mr. Karas, or do we need to wait?
We're, we're ready to go. I will be calling ultimately a planner in this, not tonight.
Okay.
And I anticipate this probably will happen for a few hearings.
Well, you're assuming you're not going to be done tonight.
I'm assuming I'm not going to be done.
Well, we'll see.
Now, based upon the reports, I anticipate there'll be revisions as we go through, so.
Mr. Karas, would you, would you talk, speak into the mic?
Oh, sure.
Yes. We've been reprimanded. You're included now.
I'm used to it.
You're ready? Anytime you're ready, Mr. Karas.
I'm all set.
All right, let's go.
If I may, Andrew Karas of the firm Fox Rothschild on behalf of Monroe Avenue Realty LLC. Before I get started, want to go through the notice?
Yes, members of the board, I have reviewed the notice and Mr. Karas's firm provided notice to everyone. It is proper and the board does have jurisdiction to hear the matter.
Excellent.
If I may, the property that we're talking about tonight is a combination of a number of lots. The address, four to 700 Monroe Avenue, it is block 2503. It comprises lots 1 through 5. We are here for an application for preliminary and final major site plan approval. For the board's identification, existing on the site is a commercial building of Le Woodson Auto, old vacant auto body shop, and the other four lots are vacant lots. The zone is Main Street redevelopment area, this is the community shopping district. What we are proposing on the site is a five-story mixed-use building, having 61 residential dwelling units that will include 13 affordable units. In addition, what we are proposing is 1,024 square feet of ground floor retail space. The building size as being proposed is 47,104 square feet. The height with the penthouse is 63.52 feet, which falls within the permitted height of the district that we are in. There are a few variances that are going to be requested. Number one is, we're building coverage, proposed is 99 percent, the max allowed is 90 percent. Impervious coverage, 100 percent is being proposed, the max allowed is 90 percent, and also the rear yard. In terms of parking requirements, 0.9 spaces per dwelling unit. The affordable does not require parking, plus there's an EV credit to which we would be seeking in this. So the total amount of spaces that are going to be on-site are 34, whereas 41 are required. We're short a couple of parking spaces. A variance or design exception is requested for that. With that being said, I have a number of witnesses that I'll be calling tonight, our engineer, our architect, will provide testimony in support of the application. First up would be our engineer, Greg Dumage.
I live in Monroe Tower, I think using the, turn the view this application, so I think I have to.
Did you get out? I don't remember seeing the list.
200 feet.
200 feet?
Yeah.
So maybe I'm, I don't have a, sure, where, exactly where this plot, it's easy to map. So for the record, do you feel like that, if you did not get noticed, do you feel that you have a, any prejudice in this application? No.
It's definitely within 200 feet.
Yeah, it's.
Depends. Whatever.
Well, it's, yeah, it's around the whole.
Property. Is it in, is the property in your name?
No.
That you own?
I have it up. I have it.
What's the?
All right, so you're not an owner, within 200 feet. You rent, you rent within 200 feet.
Probably.
I mean, you're.
I'm fine.
I'd rather not take.
Yeah, yeah, if it's within 200 feet, even though you're not an owner.
That's probably fine with us.
Probably makes sense. So I don't know if we have anyone here from the public, and I don't know if we're going to get the comments tonight. You were the, you were our, you were our man that was going to do the watch.
I understand.
But you.
We can figure that part out.
Have you probably noticed them? Was every resident?
Every, everyone on the list has been noticed. He's not an owner, he rents.
But also, if it was a condo, you notified the, whatever you call it.
The property manager.
The property management company, you don't notify.
Right.
I'm willing to stay in room 12, if it's okay, but I can't be in the room.
Mr. Karas, do you think we're going to get to the point where we're going to have public comment tonight? I, you probably.
Unless you have such an extreme interest in the application, I want to see.
You can certainly stand. Yeah, so, even though he's not an owner.
Yeah, because the thing you have, you go to the bar.
You can if you want.
Anyone else have any issues we need to bring? Great. Oh, Mr. Karas, how many parking spaces are required?
I have.
Forty-one.
Forty-one are required. I'm just going to have Mr. Domaluski put the words up.
Is there anything we need to mark?
Yeah. Let me, yeah, let me get him qualified and sworn, and then we'll start marking.
I have to play secretary in that term.
Good evening, my name is Gregory Domaluski. I'm an employee with Mid-Atlantic Engineering. Business address is 5 Commerce Way, Hamilton, New Jersey. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is current and I've given testimony before numerous boards in the state of New Jersey, as well as Esberry Park.
Mr. Domaluski, do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and enough of the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And if you could just spell your name for the record?
Sure. D O M A L E W S K I.
Yeah, and we're going to swear in our professions as well. Jason and Don, if you can raise your hand, you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, all truth, and enough of the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Domaluski, you're familiar with the project at 700 Monroe Ave., am I correct?
Yes.
And you're the engineer that prepared or oversaw the preparation, the plans, including the site plan relative to this application, am I correct? All right, what I want to do is first, let's mark a few of the exhibits. And then as we go through the application, this way.
Okay.
What do we have up on the board initially?
So right now is labeled as 700 Monroe Ave., overall rendering, prepared by Mid-Atlantic Engineering Partners, dated 7/25/22.
We're going to mark that then as A1 for identification.
Want me to put stickers on there?
Yeah, I'll bring it, I'll bring it.
So take a look at what's been marked as A1 for identification. Why don't you go through that?
Sure. So what we're going to have here is, this is the overall area of the site. In the center here, in this L shape, is the proposed building that we're going to talk about in a minute. The site in general, it's located on block 2503, lots one, two, three, four, and five. The total area of 14,700 square feet, 0.34 acres. All lots within this development are going to be consolidated as part of our project. It's located in the Main Street redevelopment area in the community shopping district. It's located along Main Street, has frontage along Main Street, which is New Jersey State Route 71, right along here.
And what's the frontage on that, 50 feet?
Approximately. Correctors, 50 feet of frontage along State Route 71.
Extends down Monroe Ave., am I correct?
It extends down Monroe Ave. approximately 217 feet. So again, as Mr. Karas said, it's located along Monroe Ave., between Main Street and Bond Street. To the north, across Monroe Ave., is an adult daycare. To the south, there's a joint property, which is a retail business in here. To the east, there's residential property directly above the property. And to the west, across Main Street, is a laundromat in that area. Currently, the site is an auto repair center or tire center for vehicles. And then it's a combination of that and some vacant lots on the area. In that commercial site, the tire shop is to be demolished. Going to bring out the next board.
Okay, we'll mark that as A2, and that's a ground floor rendering, am I correct?
Correct, this is a title 700 Monroe Ave., ground floor rendering, also prepared by Mid-Atlantic Engineering Partners, dated 7/25/22. So as you can see here, the building is located, it's an L shape configuration on the site. The proposed development is to include a five-story mixed-use building with additional penthouse story on the roof. The ground floor is going to have commercial space, 1,024 feet of commercial space, running along State Highway or Main Street, New Jersey State Highway 21, uh, 71. And then it's also going to have covered parking on the, you know, behind the buildings out here that runs mostly along Monroe. And then additional inside the building, which we'll get to, we have two stair towers, one on the western end, one on the eastern end of the building. We have a vestibule to enter, along with an elevator and mailroom. We have a trash room and an electric room located on the first floor. The upper floors, floors two through five are going to contain residential units, there are 61 units. There are going to be 30 one-bedroom apartments, 18 two-bedroom apartments, and then 13 four-story units with this building. The development is appropriate use in the redevelopment plan. And the max height of that building is targeted to be 60 feet plus 12 feet for penthouses. We are proposed height to the roof of 55.52 feet. Proposed height to the parrot bit of 59.52 feet. And then proposed height to the penthouse roof is 64.52 feet. As far as the design goes, we're going to have, like I said, ground floor retail along the street here. There's going to be building access along the Monroe Ave. frontage towards the eastern end of this building here. There's going to be two-way access for that vehicular access, it's going to be a 19-foot wide driveway through the door here into the garage. There's going to be 34 parking spaces in the garage, two of which are compact stalls measuring seven and a half by 18 feet. And then two ADA's parking stalls, one being van accessible. And the rest of the stalls in the garage are eight and a half by 18 feet.
Now, you indicated that there's going to be driveway access 19 feet wide, am I correct?
That's correct.
Now, existing, is there a singular curb cut onto the combination of properties or are there multiple curb cuts on the site?
On side two of the first sheet, sheet two of the site plan said.
All right, we're going to mark the site plan as A3 for identification.
So as you can see on the site plan said here.
And that's page?
This is page two of nine, looking at the visit edition plan, in that sheet. There's a driveway access currently off of State Highway 71. There's another one on the western end of Monroe Avenue. There's one here centrally located in the block. And there's another one down here towards the eastern end. So four curb cuts currently accessing the property.
I mean, with the curb cuts that are being shown on sheet two, would those be eliminated? So would provide for on-street parking then?
That's correct, they're going to be eliminated and replaced with one singular vehicle cut.
So can we just do the math on that? How many curb cuts exist and how many are we going to have?
Four exist, one proposed. And we're going to eliminate the four existing and have one brand new.
So the 19-foot driveway, because I see you have like a white line in the middle there, is it, is it in and out or is it just over?
It's two-way, in and out. So it's in and out.
So if it's one in that line, what is that, is that not?
Right here?
Yes.
It's actually two ADA stall in here. It's a little difficult to see the coloring, but there's two, there's like blue and the blue and the gray.
And the vehicles that you're showing there, that's the underlay of your aerial inventory.
Correct.
So it's hard to see, could you maybe just mark on there where that extends of the driveway?
The extent of the driveway right here, there's two vertical black lines on the sidewalk. That's where our curb, our driveway curb cut is going to be. Parking required for the site, we're required to have 0.9 spaces per unit for the market rated residential. We have 48 units, which require the 44 parking spaces. Zero spaces required for the affordable units. And I have two spaces for 1,000 square foot commercial, for two more spaces, for 46 required, with allowing a 10% reduction where electrical vehicle spaces are provided. I came up with a total of 42 parking spaces required, then you had.
If you round up, you'll take away, that's track five, you're at 41, am I correct?
Yes.
That's your part?
That you're correct.
Go on.
And then proposed on site, we have 34 spaces on site, including the two ADA's which I talked about. The two compact stalls, which again, we're going to talk about, which are in the northeast corner, there's one here. And there's also one right here next to the ADA stall. And then there are also six EV chargers in the garage, denoted in green here, including one electric ADA parking stall. Then we also have six, six spaces located along Monroe Avenue here, along the project frontage. And that provides for a total of 40 parking spaces, and we do a variance requested for that one unit, one parking space differential. All the parking in the garage will be assigned to residents, which will help with vehicle maneuvering of the residents in and out. Once you're assigned to a certain space in the garage, you're going to learn how to get, what is the best way to get in and out of that space for you. Depending on your vehicle and how you like to park your vehicle in there, you're going to sort of figure out what's best for you.
What does that mean, first come, first served?
No, well, first not first served for residents as they come into the building. So it's not just car belongs whoever gets there first gets it. But as you sign up for the building or lease it, you'll have the option to lease a parking stall.
You lease a parking? That's one for the affordable units?
There's no requirement for the affordable.
Yeah, but can I get one?
Can I get one, so, and will they have to lease it?
I will bring Mr. Stackman up to go through that as soon as I have this.
We will require a diminished exception from RSIS based upon requirements for them. They require for a one-bedroom is 1.8 spaces. For a two-bedroom, they require two spaces. And for a three-bedroom or an apartment, they require 2.1 spaces. For a total parking required, there are 79.7 spaces for the site for RSIS. In Jason's letter, he had mentioned getting a diminished exception of RSIS.
In terms of the driveway, the in and out, are any devices going to be included to ensure pedestrian safety as those cars pull?
Yes, so as the cars are pulling out, we're going to get a visual and audio alert for pedestrians. So when that garage door starts to go up, either light or a little noise alarm, and we'll be alerted that something's happening there. There is no bicycle park required, but we do have four bike racks along Monroe Avenue, located along the frontage between street trees. There's two bike racks down the west end near the intersection. And there's also two bikes, two bike racks here between the two trees just to the west of the vehicle access to the site. All curbs are going to be concrete curb. We're going to replace what is needed along Main Street because they just redid them. So as we construct, if we don't destroy them, we're going to keep them. However, if they do need to be replaced, we'll replace them. And then we're going to do all new concrete curb along Monroe Avenue. And we're going to replace to the nearest full joint. I know there's a couple comments in there about details of the city, and we'll match all those details.
No objection to those comments, we'll add those to the report.
Sidewalks are going to be full concrete replacement along Monroe Ave. And the sidewalk along Main Street is going to be replaced as necessary, again, because they just redid that street frontage. So if they're able to save all that concrete while building, not destroy it or damage it and mar it, then we'll just reuse that. Street trees are to be provided along Monroe Avenue. They want two, three, four, five, six, seven along the frontage from Monroe Avenue. And then again, the bicycle racks we talked about. Loading, the loading for the commercial space is going to be through FedEx trucks, UPS trucks, you know, small delivery type trucks. And won't require a dedicated loading zone. They'll get their deliveries off time and we sort of coordinate it as they need to make their business work. And then as far as res, residential move-ins, they're going to be coordinated with the police, do a temporary no parking if needed if there's a moving truck. Otherwise, you know, people can, if they're going to be moving in their cars or pickup trucks or whatever, they can drive up, get a spot, and unload into the building. The traffic, typical traffic of the project is going to include traffic associated with the residents' development. Where you do have increased AMPN trips for people coming and going to work. And the commercial space will generate trips for people coming, just in general, to that commercial tenant. And it's, we didn't do any traffic report as the, with the project, because it's consistent with the unit retail distribution within the redevelopment plan. We should make out before, right, when sort of going for the redevelopment plan and saying, we'll keep you over here on this property.
In terms of coverage for the building, what is the building coverage? And what is required under the redevelopment?
Yeah, so building coverage is 100%, where 90% is required. So whereas for variance of that. Also with that, impervious coverage is 100%, where 90% max, no, I'm sorry. Impervious coverage is 100% impervious coverage where 90% is required. And building coverage is 99% building coverage where 60 to 90% is required. So we are requesting variances for both the building coverage and the impervious coverage.
What about rear?
Rear road setback, we will have a rear road setback where 10 to 25 feet is required. And we have a zero foot proposed rear road setback.
Another variance requested, am I correct?
Another back request. So as far as site grading goes, we're meeting these existing gutter elevations along Monroe Avenue. We're maintaining ADA access along all of the sidewalks around the building. Main Street, we have existing curvy gutter that we're going to leave in place, the sidewalk is the best we can. And if we need to, we'll replace them, like patterns, like I said. Top of curb elevations range from 21.6 to 20.04. And then the foundation, along the foundation, we're going to meet the existing grade along that foundation. And we're going to maintain grade along Monroe Ave. that flows towards Main Street. It's located in Flotown X, so it's outside of the 500-year flood. The garage vestibules are approximately elevation 21.6. The retail's a little lower, because it does come down toward Main Street, you're at like 20.3 for that retail stair. And then this stair down here on the east end is about elevation 21.9. So the site generates slopes with about a foot of differential, foot and a half of grade change from east towards the west, flowing down towards Main Street.
So what's that, what's the retail show on, about 20 feet?
Yeah, it's about that. Although we talked to it, he may have mentioned in the site plan that you can pull up for your, his architectural plan, maybe he had the idea of a mention on that.
What I want you to do, we can pull up page three of the site plan that's been marked as page three for identification. What I'd like to do is, and that shows the plantings on the street along Monroe, am I correct?
Yes, it does.
All right, why don't we go through and just identify where the trees are being proposed and also any planters that are also being proposed on the site?
Sure. So we have, the street trees are located along Monroe Ave., starting near the intersection of Main Street and Monroe. That's where the first street tree is, in line with the stop bar on Monroe Avenue. And there is the second one, let's see, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, several along the frontage. Let's see, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, several along the frontage, spread evenly. And then as far as planter boxes go, around the vestibule, there are four planter boxes, it's the west side of the vestibule entry. Right up along the building, they're located in the right-of-way. So you'll need City Council approval, and we'll acquire that to do so. And there's one planter box also to the east of the vestibule entry. Which again, so the total of five planter boxes within the right-of-way that we'll have to get approval for from City Council.
Okay. So that would be a right-of-way approval and use in order to do that, am I correct?
Correct.
Are the street trees just in the dimensions or are they great?
They're gonna be the city standard.
London plate?
What's that?
London plate?
So like what are they, it's gonna be, it's gonna be chrome, it's gonna be gray?
There's gonna be, basically it's gonna be like the molds and the branding around it, I don't really detail, but it's gonna be the city standard for the tree planting detail. Then there are some additions or guiding material required for those, or to follow that.
So it's just a, it's just a couple sidewalks?
Yeah, it's just gonna be an open area in the sidewalk, and then again, with the additional planting material required.
In terms of the utilities, that would be for this site, why don't we talk about that a little bit?
Sure. The building is gonna have new sanitary, new public water, new utility services to the building. We are gonna propose to have, I think it's the great utility land there, there's a second.
That is page four?
Page four of the site plan set, great utility plan. So all utilities will be underground. Use that for the gas meter, so actually the gas pressure reading valve, pressure regulator. So on the east end of the building, our gas service is gonna come in, again, subject to approval by the Public Utility Authority, it was New Jersey National Gas. And what we've been doing in the building at Asbury Park is we have the pressure regulator, which has to be open to the air out along the front of the building. And then the gas meters themselves are inside the building. So those meters are hidden, but you will see that pressure regulator out in the front of the building along that portion. The rest of the utility will all be underground and you won't see it.
What about air conditioning, condenser units?
They're gonna be mounted on the rooftop, and you won't see them from the ground.
All right, why don't we go through the rooftop plan?
Sure. You want the rooftop rendering or you want?
The rendering. I will identify that as a four, I'm sorry, rooftop render.
Yeah, this is titled 700 Monroe Avenue, roof level rendering, prepared on the land, and varying dated 7/25/22. So what this shows up there are all of the penthouse units that stick up above the top of the building. Each of the patios, and Obie of course will give the more detail about what's gonna be up there. But each one of these penthouse units or penthouse level buildings all have a patio associated with them. So when you go up to your penthouse unit, you can walk outside to the patio, but you can't go beyond that patio. That's all you're limited to, so you don't have free run of the roof once you get up there. And each of these, you know, each of these units has its own little private patio. And it'll go up through the deep tunnels and the ways after they're constructed out of what's surrounding them and all that. And then there also is the elevator bulkhead on the east end of the building up here.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Sure.
I don't see that in our package. It's not.
It is rendering that we just introduced.
Yeah, but if that relates to, when we look at the plans, there is a rooftop plan on there.
Okay, can we refer to that one, because we don't have the other one.
Sheet six.
Sheet six, and that's what that, that's just a colorized version essentially.
Six or 1.5?
Six is the engineering plan, 1.5 would be the architectural.
Yep. So sheet six of the site plan set is the roof lighting plan. And what that shows up there are the elevator bulkhead on the east end. You have the lofts, each one of the penthouse loft units are up there, and then the little boxes next to the little patios. And on this plan specifically, you'll see each one of these penthouse units has a light by the door for security and safety, you know, up there. So basically you have a small little light fixture there. It is a downward facing light where the light bulb is fully contained in that fixture. And what it does is it throws a little bit of light near the patio door, so you have some sort of light when you're out there, sitting there, and going out. What this shows also on this plan is that there is no spillage of the light anywhere near the edge of the roof, let alone over the edge of the roof or to the parapet.
Yeah, in terms of the mechanicals, where would those be located on the roof in relation to where those penthouses are?
Certainly. So they'll be on the, so if you're looking at the Monroe Ave side, they'll be behind all those penthouse units, sort of in this middle area. And again, exact area, I don't know, but we have on his plan, he can certainly talk to him more.
We'll talk to him then with him.
Yep.
Is this a electric?
Refer that to the architect, go through the details.
Well, I mean, you're ground floor too, I don't see a boardroom.
Again, I think Obie will be able to talk to all the council today, how the building's gonna function.
All right, in terms of lighting, since you touched upon that, why don't we go through the lighting for the building and?
Sure.
And that's page five?
This page five and nine is entitled the lighting and landscape plan, it's part of the site plan set, set by Alcides. So there are, we'll start off with the street level outside the building, right? So all these, there's nine A-type lights located around the outside of the building that are to help assist in illuminating the sidewalk. There are ball Scots type lights right here, there's a detail of them up in the right-hand corner. And it's a light that, you know, helps with the architecture, been selected by the architect to help accentuate his design. And it's just, it's just there to help illuminate the sidewalk a little bit. To broadcast some light into the sidewalk to give people, you know, give safety and security around the building there. Then inside the garage itself, there are 23 lights within the garage to help light up this garage. And we would request that we are able to keep those garage lights on 24 hours a day, because it can get dark in the garage. If you just turn the lights off, you know, say at sunrise, you're gonna end up with dark parts of the garage. So we would request to keep them on 24 hours a day for safety and security of the garage there. One of the questions that are poured, the engineering board talked about lights spillage from the garage. Most of the garage, you see the architecture, is closed in. There are a couple vents that the architect had to put in the building as part of his design. It's decorated grate with a decorative cutout in the garage in that venting. So it is possible that some light would broadcast a little shadow on the sidewalk from those grates. But in general, there's not gonna be any raw and spillage of light out of the road of the sidewalk.
What about on the exterior scotces, how far is that light, that light going to illuminate from those spaces?
They are, I mean, you have almost two-foot candles at the sidewalk. So really, this, this plan is sort of, it's hard to tell, because we do model the existing streetlights there as well. So it's hard to say exactly where those lights end and where the light from the street kicks in. But in general, it looks like about the edge of the curb is about two-foot candle of light at the edge of the curb.
The light only goes down from those scotces?
No, those light, then we'll say, so this'll be like a frosted type glass or something, those ball Scots. And it's an LED fixture in there, so that'll be on, and it'll just give a general glow to the sidewalk.
It illuminates out, but it's not directed up.
Right, it's not directed up, it illuminates out from the ball Scots.
Anything else with lighting, does that cover it?
That's it for lighting.
Okay, in terms of stormwater management, why don't we discuss that?
Sure. So we are increasing impervious surface on the site. And required by Asbury Park requires two gallons of stormwater for a new square foot of impervious, which has to manage using green infrastructure. We request a variance from doing that or an exception to that requirement. Mainly because the site generally, there's not a lot of room to fit any green infrastructure per se. You're not gonna be able to get any bio swells or anything like that around it, because the building takes up the entire site. There are small increases in the post-development runoff as a result of that. The two-year storm goes from 1.12 cubic feet per second to 1.36 cubic feet per second. I'm worried with the numbers, but I'll go up to the 500-year storm. Has 3.49 cubic feet per second runoff pre-development, it's almost three and a half cubic feet per second. And we're going up to 3.64 cubic feet per second for the 500-year storm. So it is a very small increase in the amount of stormwater runoff that would be coming off the site as designed.
And where's that stormwater going to go?
That stormwater's gonna be going to the inlet that's located at the intersection of Monroe Ave and State Highway, Main Street. And it's actually gonna tie into the inlet that's on Monroe Ave, right near the corner.
So that water, that's gonna be a tie-in, there's nothing that's gonna be going directly from the building onto the sidewalk, am I correct?
Correct, so everything from the building roof is gonna be collected internally and piped underground to that inlet. So there will be no stormwater from our building running across the sidewalk, as you have today. All the stormwater right there, right out there now, runs across the sidewalk currently.
Okay, so there'd be no sheet flow whatsoever, am I correct?
Correct.
Since we're on that topic.
The sidewalks.
I just wanna ask one question, you guys are going for DOT approval?
Correct.
And you'll be giving them your stormwater and they'll have a look at that as well?
That's correct.
Okay.
Does that go over to Sunset Lake or does that go to Wesley? The stormwater?
I'm not sure where that one actually goes, I have to take a look at overall maps of the town, of the city, I don't know, Jason may know, I'm not sure. Just in general.
Do you know which lake it goes into?
I don't, I could try and look at it while we're talking.
If I had to guess Wesley?
Wesley, you think?
If I had to guess?
I have a quick question.
If they start up more than we think about?
If the square footage of the building was reduced a little bit, then it would allow you to not have to ask for all those impervious cover, the infrastructure, green infrastructure requirement, the coverage. So is it a consideration to just reduce the square footage to meet those requirements?
We actually, we talked about that, and then I think that's one of the things that, you know, Mr. Sakman have to talk about as far as what makes the project work.
Yeah, we'll have Mr. Sak, there are different ways of looking at it. You know, the, one of the main objectives is number one, to provide housing. There's a significant shortage of housing that we have right now throughout the entire country, particularly during the surge. Number two, more affordable units. We're providing 20% and we're able to provide that by having X amount of units, 61 units in total, in the building. That requires, though, in order to provide all these units, the additional housing, the affordable, to have the building take up the entire site in order to accomplish all that. So I'll have Mr. Sak testify to that also. But that was a thinking in terms of taking up the entire site, utilizing site, providing more residential units, in term of provide more affordable units.
Right, 'cause I agree with Jen, because you'd probably remove at least three of your variances if you didn't use 100% of the site.
I know what it does is allows the garage to function more, better basically, it's more. What happens if you're, if you start shrinking down the building in certain ways, you're gonna cut off space or cut off efficiency of the garage. This is one of the reasons why we also propose the way you did.
It's like everything else in Asbury Park, it's the tail wagging the block in terms of parking. Gotta get the parking on the site, and that's the way of doing it, is utilizing the entire site to accomplish that.
But if you didn't have as much building coverage and not as much impervious, you wouldn't need as much parking. But let's, let's move on, because that's, Mr. Sakman is going to be one of your witnesses later on. Okay.
Anything else? Covered everything?
Yeah, I think we covered everything simultaneously.
If the board had, before I get to the reports, if the board has any questions up to this point?
I do, one of the questions that I have has to do with, I seem to remember that you're asking for a variance of one parking space? When you were counting up the parking spaces that were on Monroe, you ended up with, we need a variance of one.
Yeah, we, I'm gonna take a look at the redevelopment plan.
I need, we need to rethink that calculation.
Well, I gotta look through, I gotta see that if we're creating parking spaces on the street at that point. So I do have to take a look at the plan when we're done just to review that. We do have 34, I think we came up with.
With three.
Forty-one is the requirement.
Right.
And then we're also adding six on the street, so I got.
No, you're adding three on the street. From what I understand, you have four curb cuts, and you're gonna be using one of those, so you're, you're, you're adding three spaces. So that's 37, not 41. So I just wanna make sure that we have the right number that we're talking about.
Yeah, we have 34 in the garage.
Correct.
That's where we're voting garage.
That's right.
And then there's going to be six spaces along Monroe Avenue.
Which exist today except for the curb cuts.
I, we're gonna take a look.
There are spaces that exist out there today.
Right, so.
Some sort of existing space out there versus proposed.
Right, but, but that's not part of this application.
We'll have that exact.
Okay. Thank you.
But in the garage, there are 34 proposed.
Understood.
I, I think you testified that the lighting along the perimeter of the building is somewhere in the magnitude of two, two and a half foot candles?
Yes.
Your plan shows it's something considerably more than that, 6.3, 3.6 on the sidewalk on Main Street.
Yeah, so, I'm sorry, I was looking at the Monroe Avenue side where there's no existing lights modeled. The reason for that side being so much more intense, if you look at the corner of the property, there's existing B light right in between the, if you're looking at the plan, you see the 4.4 spot shot or simple candle point at the southwest corner? Right below, there's a B light, so that's what's throwing all the light into the areas, existing light that's out there today.
So on Monroe, this is just the building-mounted lighting?
Yes.
So it's a 14-2 next to the garage door, but it's only a 7 next to the lobby door? And it's the same fixture, same height, almost the same distance?
Yeah, it could be a.
Yeah, I think you just need to.
We'll double check it.
Double check it.
I think you need to take a look at all that lighting, where you indicate that the light standard, the B light is in that southwest, southwest corner?
Yep.
I see that on Main Street, the foot candles are up above nine. And along the building, they're two and a half, 2.4, 2.9. Then it goes on to 4.4, 4.7, 6.3, I think you need to look at that again.
Yes, what happens is you have a light model between the two. Basically what it does, you have, you do have a bright spot shot, a bright spot right where that light is, and it fades out from there. So what you're having there between that 4.4, 2.2, and 4.7, those are multiple lights interacting with each other there to give that gradient. And the software, as it models those lights, you know, wherever those point-by-points fall, because you're not having a point at every single spot out here, this is a grid that's basically in the software design, and that's where that grid falls. We'll certainly take a look at it and see if we can clarify a little better for you.
You also indicated on your plans that you're not going to remove all the curb, you're only going to remove curb at the existing curb cuts? And you're gonna splice in curbing?
That's correct, so on Monroe Ave, we're replacing all the curb.
That's not what your plan shows.
What's that?
That's not what your plan shows. That's, I was gonna ask you to do that.
We go back to the layout plans. Yeah, this is shown with certain areas along the driveways to replace it, but Monroe Avenue, we've had site visits out there since this curb is done. And the curbing along Monroe Ave should be replaced in entirety. The curb along Main Street is going to be left existing, except we're gonna splice it in unless that curb is damaged. But we'll certainly clarify that on the plan.
I'm sorry?
We'll clarify that on the plan.
Okay, that's on sheet three.
Yep.
So did you, wasn't one of the curb cuts on Main that we need to have that replaced?
Yes, we're gonna replace that section of curb.
Okay, so that that's gonna turn into a parking spot, okay?
Any other questions before I get to the reports?
Any, anything else from the planning board members? Go ahead.
What I'd like to do is first go through the insight report, which is dated July 20th of 2022.
I'm sorry, can you please bring your microphone down? I'm sorry, can you please bring your microphone down? Thank you.
We can go through the insight report, which is dated July 20th of 2022. And why don't we mark that as B1, that'll be a board exhibit? What I'd like to do is first go to page two. And on the completeness review, just go through a number of those items, tax, math is not provided, we have no issue with providing that, am I correct?
Yes, the date yes, we'll comply with that.
Number two, with regard to the utilities, a comment on that, no issue with that, am I correct?
Correct, it does say in there that they have no objection to providing the limited, limited to the direct frontage of the property, which we'll comply with.
Number three, in terms of roof plans, as well as elevations of the building, checklist items, sort of information regarding the appearance of the rooftop, asking for detailed testimony regarding the visibility of the various rooftop equipment features. You testified to that, but we will add that equipment to the plans, am I correct?
Correct, yep.
Gutters, scuppers, and downspout locations not provided on the plans.
Yep, we'll provide that.
And phasing plan has not been submitted. This is, in terms of the construction of the project, it's all going to be constructed at the same time, am I correct?
That's correct, there's going to be no construction phasing.
In terms of the project description, asked for the hours of operation for the retail space, select number of employees. Till we have tenants that occupy the retail space, we can't say how many employees are going to be there, it depends upon the nature of the use that will occupy that space. In terms of the hours of operation for the retail space, your normal hours of operation as allowed in Asbury Park. Building maintenance, I can have Mr. Sackman testify to that, but in, like all his buildings in Asbury Park, we'll have the super that will handle the maintenance of this building. And color rendering, we'll have the architect come up with color rendering of that. We did, the rendering is reflected on the first page of the architectural plans, we'll have a larger copy of that. Number eight, on page three, the proposed locations and screen method, the exterior mechanical equipment. Again, we'll have testimony with regard to utility meters, we've already provided testimony on, we'll include the other equipment on the plans. Nine, Miss Park, we've gone through that. Building height, number 10, we've gone through that, am I correct?
That's correct.
Waves disposed, we'll have the architect go through there, Mr. Sackman, signage would be for the architect. Next page, page four, number 13, the architectural elements, again, will be for the architect. Loading and loading, we provided that testimony, am I correct?
That's correct.
Lighting, again, they requested 15A photometric analysis, extend onto the joint property, no issue with providing that?
Correct.
Proposed lighting in the penthouse, low create light spillage to the ground level, will that occur?
Yeah, we test, I testified to that already, that there's no light spillage to the ground level.
Any glare to nearby residences?
Not from the penthouse units at all, no.
With regards to light fixtures within the city right of way, we acknowledge we need the approval of the mayor and council, am I correct?
Correct.
E, light fixture A does not appear to be full cutoff, an exception is required, testimony shall be provided regarding potential for adverse glare within the city right of way.
Correct, and that's, so that's the light that we talked about, that's a wall mount discos that complements the architecture of the building. It's going to have a light glow to it, and we do request that that exception be granted for that type of light.
F, the proposed light color temperature for each of the proposed fixtures, we're looking for clarification on. And six, it appears an exception is required for our proposing a color temperature other than 2,700 K.
Yeah, we would like that exception to go to 3,000.
Sixteen, TWA approval.
TWA, I believe will be required, but either way, we'll comply if it's required, if not, then we'll just go for a city approval.
Seventeen, approvals to the state right of way, requires DOT approval, we acknowledge that, am I correct?
Correct, we get approval.
With regard to development, do you have any impact on noise, air, and water quality, do you anticipate any?
No negative impacts, I just mean.
I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt while you're actually speaking. Back to the color temperature, your note on the lighting plan says that it's going to be color temperature of 2,700.
Okay, then, that's fine, we're good.
Lighting note five and six, type A and type C lighting fixtures will be 2,700 K.
Okay, that's fine then.
We're good with that?
We're good.
Noise, air, and water quality, these are all permitted uses, am I correct?
Correct.
Any impact with regard to noise, air, and water quality?
None that I can see.
Nineteen, concrete curb construction detail for the city right of way requires, asking for revisions, requires sawcut to the nearest joint.
Yep.
Okay, with that?
We'll add those details from the city stand.
Similarly, with regard to the sidewalk, number 20, no issue with that?
Correct.
Storage, we'll have additional testimony with regard to that, recyclable materials, we'll have additional testimony to the stormwater. We've addressed this, but why don't we touch upon each one of these again?
Sure. So A requires the two gallons of stormwater shall be managed for each new square footage of impervious. Again, we asked that, you grant that design exception. Again, B talks about for stormwater management features that require soil testing. And then C talks about the final destination of the stormwater, which we testified goes to the inlet, we're trying to figure out which lake it goes to, whether it goes to Wesley or Sylvan.
Wesley or Sunset.
Oh, Wesley or Sunset, sorry. And any proposed stormwater management features shall be protected from future development by conservation's and D's restriction. Certainly, if we have anything, we will. And then the application just meant to DOT for approval, which we will. And then we'll provide conduit capacity calculations to the engineer for review.
Twenty-four, vehicular turning movement, there are a number of comments with regard to that, why don't we go through those?
Okay. So A says there are several stalls near the two-way drive access that will need temporary, needs temporarily block the two-way driveway while accessing those parking stalls. Yes, they will, I mean, the car is going to have to pull in and pull into its parking spot and back out when it's time to go. Turning movement plan shall be provided to indicate how a vehicle maneuver the parking stalls nearest to the entrance, I'm happy to provide them to.
Provide that, we'll add that to the plans?
Yep.
Oh, wait a minute.
Yep.
If you provide it, it's going to show something, I don't know if I'm going to have to make the call on that. I'm sure you're going to ship the car getting in and out and make this. You're coming back anyway, so.
No, we're going to add it to the plans and then we'll submit it to the board.
Yep. Testimony should be provided, whether the parking stalls will be assigned, we talked about that, they're going to be assigned. As far as the operation of the garage door, whether there's any permanent warning systems, IMD, we testify that there will be.
I'm sorry?
Oh, they're going to be assigned to residents only. Retail is going to be surrounding parking on the streets.
There's a requirement.
There's a requirement for two.
But, that's correct, it'll be just for the residential tenants within the building.
Proposed aisle width, the history portion of the garage is 22.6 feet, where 24 feet is required for eight and a half wide spaces, an exception is required. We would like to request that, and we'll provide turning maneuvers that show that vehicles can access those stalls. Proposed driveway width is 19 feet, whereas a minimum of 20 feet is required for two-way operation, exception is required, testimony should be provided. We are requesting that, and it's due to building architecture reasons why we have to have the 19-foot opening versus 20-foot opening.
Okay, with regard to the additional considerations, there are planter box number 25, the dimensions, ask that those be added to confirmed impression, no objections to that, am I correct?
Correct.
Lots shall be consolidated, there'll be a merger of all the lots, am I correct?
Yep.
Proposed right within the public right of way shall be cleared dimension on the plans.
That's fine.
No issue with that?
No issue.
Phasing of construction, we have already testified that it will be a singular construction, will be no phasing.
Correct.
Project, am I correct? With regard to connection to the city sewer line, after issuance of the proper permits, am I correct?
Yep, we'll comply with that.
Number 30, why don't we address that?
Okay, talks about where several areas of sidewalk near the street appear excessively steep. Certainly, any sidewalks are going to be ADA compliant on our plans, and we'll verify to ensure that. And we'll also double check to make sure the existing sidewalks are ADA compliant, so our goal is to make an ADA compliant sidewalk for the city.
Thirty-one has to do with the monitoring laws, we'll have Mr. Sackman provide testimony on that. Thirty-two, emergency vehicles. Ordinarily, emergency vehicles do not access any garage for a residential or commercial building, they stay on the outside. Similarly, they would have access from the outside of this project.
They will have access from the outside of city streets on this project, correct.
Not unlike other buildings within a semi or an urban area, am I correct?
Correct.
Thirty-three would be with regard to structural engineering, that'll be provided at the appropriate time, correct?
Yep.
And sewer connection fees, the appropriate fees will be provided, am I correct?
Yes.
Before I move on to the planters report, does anybody have any questions with regard to the insight report?
Yeah, would you please address item 31 again?
I'm sorry?
Item 31.
Oh, that's about the monitoring laws, Mr. Sackman's going to talk to that.
This is a facility right now that is an active garage. Tire facility, it probably was a gas station at one time. What's the status of the tanks, if any?
I'm going to have Mr. Sackman testify.
Okay, Mr. Sackman will address this issue? One other question concerning the sidewalks on Monroe. What's the shape, is it pretty good shape, or they're going to have to be removed?
Monroe is going to be all removed or replaced, yeah, they're in pretty rough shape. Okay.
What's the width of the sidewalk on Monroe? And then, it's going to.
Twelve foot six typical from the back of the tree pits to the base of the building.
Okay, so you've got the curb, then how many feet off the curb line will the trees be planted?
So it's, the tree pits are right up on the curb line, and those tree pits are five feet wide.
Thing that concerns me there, and maybe I'm totally wrong. We're supposedly picking up six or seven parking spots there, but you can't open your door because there's a tree there, we're not picking up parking spots.
Yeah, it's just city standard.
But then you can't say we're picking up parking spots if you can't open up a door to get out of the car.
You'd say the driver's side is located towards Monroe Ave.
Driver's side.
Right, but, you know, they're passing your door.
Right, the passenger can't get out.
You know, if you're getting.
Like in your environment where you have, our whole apartment up against street trees, sometimes you'll have that conflict and people have to adjust.
Can we see that on your plan down the road? What's that?
So Mayor, it does show that there'd only be two trees that are like mid parking space? There might be a way to adjust the spacing of the street trees so that they only line up with the, with the space.
I mean, if it's a five-foot wide pit and the tree's right in the middle, I mean, you still should have room, you know, two feet or so to be able to.
We can take a look at adjusting them, if we have to add another street tree to make it fall where we have less than 30-foot spacing and we have that, every stall will figure something out.
Yeah, maybe adjusting in between where the middle of the stall is to give. It's fine, thank you.
We'll get iterations and locations solved.
Yeah, because you also, sorry, there's also the two trees that flank the driveway are within the side triangle. So we might need to push them further out and then that'll, yeah, shift everybody, yeah.
Sure. Okay. And would you explain the rationale for the location of the planters? They don't seem to have any rhyme or reason as to where they're located.
Yeah, it's to do with the building architecture.
To line up with the, with the windows in the garage.
Window spacing and they flank the entryway.
Get interest onto the streets and greenery.
I'm sure it will be adjusted.
Any other questions with regard to the engineering report? If not, I'll move on to the CCH report. And the mark is CCH report, B2 for identification.
Mr. Karas, I don't know if you want to just hold off on this until we have Obie's testimony, because most of my report deals with the building architecture.
No, there just, I want to just hit comments that pertain to the engineer.
Okay.
Since we have them up here. All right, I was going to go directly to page 10, which hits on the parking, and then page 12, the lighting.
And again, you know, I gave my comments during the directs, I think I'm satisfied you're going to make it 2,700, we're going to see some better, for the color temperature, you're going to give us some clarification on the, on the photometrics for the lighting on the street. I do want to talk about the credit for the EV parking, because Michael Sullivan and I spent a lot of time talking about how this is actually supposed to be applied. So.
Sure, so I can just touch on this a little bit, from what I understand of the code, is that you have to make 15%.
Well, so let's start, first of all, at what is the actual requirement, off-street parking requirement under the MSRP for the building? It's two for.
Forty.
The retail, and then there's however many for the apartments.
Yeah, I have, just so we're all on the same page, I have 0.9 times 48 units, because we're not including the 13 affordable units. So we have 48 units times 0.9, that's 44 parking spaces. We have two for the retail for a total of 46. 10% of that is 4.6, under section F, you round up, so you would have five then to which you're entitled to apply.
So, and that's the thing that Sullivan and I have been arguing about, it's not, it shouldn't come off the total, it goes up from what you're providing. So, so you have 34 parking spaces, you're doing six electric vehicle spaces, that's worth 12 spaces, except 12 is more than 10%.
Correct, the most you can do is 10% off the 46.
So that's five spaces.
Correct.
So you do your 34 plus five spaces for your EV credit for a total of 39 spaces, provided, even though five of them are imaginary. They're not actually provided, they're, right.
Right.
So, that's how we're saying there's a 39 car, or 39 space.
I got you, okay, and then 44, so we have a shortage of five. Okay. Yeah, I don't disagree with those numbers.
Okay, so that's all I have.
Do we have a shortage of five, or do we have a shortage of sets?
We say it's a shortage of five.
It's strictly related to the presidential?
Thirty-four plus the five credit is a total of 39.
All right, but I thought you said 46 spaces are needed?
Oh, because Andy said the. For the commercial space, you're allowed to provide off-site parking.
Yeah, those are the two that matter around the street, that's right.
But we have to go through the calculations to make sure we can apply them.
Yeah, so we have, yeah, well, the two you can provide off-street, so we're providing at least three new off-street, or off-site, on-street. So that would satisfy your commercial, and then your residential, you have a requirement of 44, we're providing with the credit 39, so you have a shortage of five. Agree with that?
Yes.
All right, if you're satisfied that we've gone through the comments and the plan, then we don't have to go through that in your report.
Okay, anybody else have any questions of our engineer?
I think head height comes into play in this garage. Head height, I think, comes into play in this garage, to not be able to do the stackers. I know that Obie talked to Clarence Head Height, he'll go over that.
So is that something that. So is that something that he will speak to?
Yeah, he'll call, he'll give you the.
He'll go through the, yeah.
Okay, um, would, uh, would you be able to answer, how does this, this building compare in height to the buildings around it? Like especially the building right across the street in height? Meaning that what, what, what will, will anyone see that penthouse if they are across the street on the fourth floor or fifth floor, whatever that floor is of that building? Will they see the penthouse?
I can't say offhand right now, I don't know.
Okay, who would know?
Perhaps, Obi, but.
Okay, so then we'll.
Hope he'll talk to it.
Okay. 'Cause I know that you've mentioned that, that there's no spillage, but if someone can see across, I'd like to know if they can see across.
First street is the, on Monroe, is the Y?
Yes, the Y, yes. 'Cause it's un, it's just unclear to me how, what the heights are. All right, any other questions? If not, go ahead.
You said that the height of the top of the penthouses, if I recall, was either sixty-three or sixty-five feet.
Sixty-four point five two feet, correct.
Okay. And that's, that's the top of the penthouse?
Yes.
Okay, so you are above, you say that in the chart, uh, one of the charts, you said that the roof height was only sixty feet, but.
Sixty feet is permitted and you're allowed to have twelve additional feet for penthouses.
So what is the roof height then?
So the roof height is fifty-five point five two feet to the roof.
Plus?
And then fifty-nine point five two to the parapet.
And then to the top of the penthouse?
Is sixty-four point five.
So the roof, the, the parapet is four foot?
The parapet is about four feet, yes.
All right, any other questions? I open that to the public, any questions from the public of this witness? Go forward.
One quick question, is affordable housing required under the Main Street redevelopment plan?
Yes.
It is, okay, thank you.
I thought that affordable housing was put on there. Is that correct? I thought it was optional.
No, it was amended.
CBMD, it's optional depending upon the circumstance. But there's certain bonus requirement or bonuses that you get out of it, the Main Street is required.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we wanna take a, a five-minute? Okay, five minutes, motion to for a five-minute break.
So move.
Okay. All in favor?
Yep.
All right. Shall we come to order? Are you ready, Mr. Karas?
I am.
Okay, do a roll call?
Yes. Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman Avon Clayton.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Jennifer Souter.
Here.
Alexis Taylor.
Here.
Erica Lupo.
Galapo, here.
Sorry, Galapo. Uh, Daniel Chalamo. And Sherri Kurzak.
Here. Okay, let's go.
Can we swear, Obi? Oh, I'm sorry. You solemnly swear affirm, the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
And if you could state your name for the record?
My name is Obi Agudosy, uh, registered architect in the state of New Jersey, New York and Pennsylvania.
And if you could just spell your name for the record?
First name is OBI, O-R-A. Last name is A-G-U-D-O-S-A-N-I.
Thank you. Obi, just for the board's purposes, you testified before this board on numerous occasions and have been qualified as an architect, am I correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Obi, you're familiar with this project at seven hundred Monroe Avenue, am I correct?
Yes.
Can you prepare renderings and plans relative to this project, am I correct?
Yes.
All right, what I want you to do is first go through the renderings. We have the visual of what is being posed and then we'll go through the details with regards to your architectural plans.
Thank you very much. First of all, good evening, thank you for giving us the opportunity to hear us and present this. So the drawings I'm gonna start with the renderings, we're not part of what is what we're doing.
That'll be A five for identification?
There's, there's two drawings, A three point zero and A three point one.
So it'll be A five and A six. So the first one is A three point zero and the second one is?
A three point one.
A three point one. And these are just color rendering?
Yeah, those are color render.
A, A five and A six.
Great, so what we are looking here is the rendering of the building, uh, that's showing the corner of the Monroe and Main Street as indicated by the civil engineer.
Right.
We're proposing to have commercial space on the, on the lower floor here. And the entrance to the building would be on Monroe Avenue, this corner here. And then from that point to here, pretty much here, and then the rest of the road. So what we are doing is we're using some decorative tanks similar to what we propose for three sixteen Main Street. We're gonna try to find that to, to try to in character to, to that blank wall as well as try to create some privacy in that space. I've had the other question asked before, from the first floor to the second floor, we have fourteen clear. So by the time you add for the construction and all that sort of floor, you may have about twelve, eleven, six to love clear, you know, from the first floor. I wanted to address that as well. And so in this area here, we're planning to use mostly brick, uh, construction, uh, brick material to the wall levels. And then we're gonna use a combination of material panels and, you know, on the upper floor as well. Again, this is trying to make it be in character with some of the other buildings in town in terms of use of material. These are durable materials that will last, so I wanted to make sure that we bring that to the property. The corner of the building, which is on Monroe and Main Street, we're trying to find a corner by, you know, making the roof area or the top out of that area, kind of announce it. And we designed it so that we will be able to provide windows in that corner. And with this building, or like the other ones, we're gonna try to, uh, make it at least nice, you know, nice, certain height there so that the glass can be really, um, visible and be able to bring outside in, in the indoor spaces. So that's, uh, that's the main elevation. Go to the next sheet, which is A three point one.
B six for identification? Next, B six for identification?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Page A three point one, and part is B six.
So this shows the rest of the elevation. Again, this is the perspective of it, up, way up in the air looking. And we did this to try to show in terms of the penthouses, you know, how minimal the view is even at, at this level, um, what that looks like. And so this shows a higher perspective of it looking at that corner. This elevation here, this rendering here, which is similar to the elevation presented, is just trying to show what the actual, you know, building facade along Monroe.
So that would be looking south on Monroe Avenue, am I correct?
Yes, yes. So that's the, that's the Monroe. Again, the main entrance is in this area here and then we have this element that defines, you know, this area. Now, because it's a long building, there's a need to try to break it up, otherwise you have a very long facade. So our attempt was to try to use, uh, some materials to define hierarchy, break down the spaces so that it, um, it's like you're posing on a street scale. Again, I believe that the material that we're gonna use to cover the garage will be nice to be monumental. There's ability to come up with some design, different, you know, design to, uh, to kind of soften the look of that. And I believe that's part of what we also presented in the, in one of the sheets, what it looks like. So along the Main Street, again, that's a narrow portion of the, of the building, which is the challenge to try to break it up, you know. So what we've attempted to do is create the lower level, um, some of the comments in terms of, we need to walk in, yes, we're gonna, and I just plan to reflect some of those things. We got that on Friday, so we're not able to, but next time around, we definitely be able to, you know, improve on the elevations to incorporate that. So this area here to define the base and then on top of it, we have, you know, units here, I believe that here we have the bedroom here and the bathroom here. So that's, so those are the elevation.
A comment was brought up about new planters and how that fits into the SAW on Monroe Avenue, what do we discuss?
Can I ask you a question first? The vertical element above the first story, is that, is that a protrusion out past the building line, this one here? Well, you know, this one? No, I'm sorry.
This one here.
Is that the protrusion?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's slight, uh, protrusion that we're trying to.
Just that.
Um, I think from here, I would say probably in this direction from here, it's about maybe six entities.
Does that go into the, the city's right away?
Yes.
Is that true with the roof as well? Is that true with the roof, the corner piece?
Yes, yes.
And that would require proof.
And that would be true as on Monroe Avenue?
Yes, yes.
Can I just ask a procedural question? That we don't get these. So when you say that, you know, well, here's what it looks like down up on the penthouse, I'm back here. I, I see a, I see a rendering, I can't see what you're showing me. So I just wanna understand, why don't we get these?
Well, the first one, that's A five you have on the front page.
That's correct, I get that, but, yep, like these, we don't get them.
These we didn't submit, that is correct.
Okay, but what are we gonna do in the future so we do get them? For your, for your clients.
I make an effort to try to get everything in, all right? And I provide a ton of documentation to the board ahead of the application. This one, we didn't have the time to get.
But, but then we should have something to pass out, if you wouldn't mind, for the future so that we can enjoy these good renderings as much as you do. Because I for one cannot see it.
I'm not disagreeing.
Just say it.
I absolutely agree.
Okay. Go ahead.
I, I clearly provided, you know, you felt like it's better to, for the enhancement of it, we'll help capture the spirit of the building.
Oh, absolutely, I totally agree with you, but I would love to be able to see it.
Yes, I agree with you.
Okay. Go ahead.
And.
These are then, we're starting with the architectural plans and we're gonna go on the whole set of architectural plans will be marked as A seven.
So the first sheet is T.
Before we do that, are we marking these color rendering ones or these?
Yeah, we mark.
These are the same ones that are submitted?
No, we marked the color renderings that we had already just gone through, it's A, A five and A six.
So these are the ones that are?
As far as the architectural plans that we brought to the board, this is A seven.
I just want to be clear.
Thank you.
So the first sheet is T one hundred. Again, the, uh, the rendering, we're showing what the stacker did, what I presented today was more common version of that. Again, that's been, uh, indicated by a grid, uh, we have the pocket, the first floor, so we're trying to show the site here, drive in, parking on both sides and around here, this is pretty, on the first floor.
So the ground floor, the ground floor goes to the Y, right? Hundred percent?
Uh, yes. Except for some in, in this area here, you know, the bike away from, you know, I need to pull up the first one, which is A one point one.
And this is at grade, am I correct? This at grade? This is at grade?
At grade, yes, first floor at grade, yes.
Okay.
So again, uh, this is on the line for the lobby, shows all the parking. We have the lobby area in the middle with a bedroom right off, off the side, as well as we also are providing the commercial retail space at the end, which is somewhere near Main Street. Providing two stairs, which are required by code for interest and they will allocate appropriately to allow us to, you know, to be among travel distances that we are required to provide. Uh, again, we have, we have a screen door in this corner here and, uh, we have a building utilities as well as a washroom provided in this corner.
And what is the size of the trash room that is provided there?
Um, it's about two hundred and eight square feet.
Okay, and that, the size of that is consistent with what other developments that Sackman has done to meet their needs, am I correct?
Yes.
And they have the super, your understanding based upon, you're working on this application. There's a super that handles the site and that control trash and garbage, am I correct?
Yes.
In terms of the door, before we go on, in terms of the doorways, um, that go from the vestibule out onto the sidewalk, how do the doors swing? Do they swing into the right away?
Yes, we're required to swing it out for, for diverse purposes, which we're doing here. And they swing out into the sidewalk, but based on the design, we are providing some planters on the side, you know, so it provides some kind of coverage to it. If it's, and based on the comments that were raised, if it's required, we may be able to pull them back thoroughly. But the, the reason why we're trying not to do that is because it makes the lobby very, very tight. So since we have provided the, the planners, we believe that will also help to define the entrance, help to, you know, uh, really make it more homely. And once you provide that, then you provide the coverage for us to be able to swing.
Go on.
Let me just, but are you doing planters on the Main Street side or only Monroe?
We have, um, I think we have on Monroe, that's what we.
Right, so the doors.
There are no planters that are being proposed on Main Street, am I correct?
I don't understand.
And are those doors also going straight out onto the sidewalk to swing it out?
Yes.
Now, the canopy above, destroying, the canopy looks like it goes, it closes at six inches, those are horizontal elements, but it looks like they go past the doors.
Oh, I'm stuck. I found one on the, on this side.
Well, they go past the doors too.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And the doors are people in.
For it is.
Inches, yeah.
Obi, do we have a measurement for those canopies, how far out they extend around the building?
Um, I do not have them dimensioned, but I can, you know.
We can add them to the plans next time.
Just go to the door.
Two six inches, these are, these are approximately about forty, forty inches, forty inches out there.
So the canopy might be bigger for the off.
Yes, yes, what we're currently showing, but we, it is possible to pull them back as they were required.
But we'll provide the dimensions when we come back on the plans to show exactly what it is and then go for that. Go ahead.
Again, in terms of the, on this plan, we have all the units laid out in terms of the metrics which were provided to you. So the units vary in sizes, uh, we have the one and the two bedrooms, uh, you go from a thousand, um, one hundred and ninety something. We have some, some that are a bit bigger than that, that's why it's a different size. So the next sheet is A one point two, which is the, uh, second floor. Again, we have a combination of two bedrooms, one bedroom, and one bedroom is started. On the corner here, we have a two-bedroom, which is about a thousand and thirty-seven square foot. Well, on the other end of him, we also have another, uh, two-bedroom in that corner. The building, we're also providing a laundry on this, uh, this corner here, which will be used by tenants, uh, as well as the elevator, it's a elevator here. There's, uh, some storage area where, you know, they can, yeah, some of the items will solve on, it's like, yeah.
There's also a surf closet.
Yes, that's where I, right, it's on the.
And additionally, this, uh, floor has its own trash room, am I correct?
Yes, yes.
The floor, in all of these one-bedroom units, um, you have a bedroom with no window?
No.
Is that, or not all of them? The six, starting, can you point to the ones that only have, that have bedrooms with no exterior window?
This one here, that one, this, this one's a, probably in between. For instance, this one doesn't have it.
That one does.
This has a bedroom, but it doesn't have, doesn't. We have, you know, it's not a core requirement to provide an exterior.
And similar to design in the seven hundred bangs.
Understood. So you have an indication of something in the closets of those windowless bedrooms? What does that mean? It's this round thing inside the small closet?
Oh, that's the water.
Water boy.
Water.
Water. So it's inside the bedroom. I would encourage you to think about flipping the bathroom and kitchen to the back, what I would call the back of the apartment against the corridor and somehow get more light into these bedrooms, because they just don't seem like.
Again, if the design that I have here is consistent with seven hundred bangs, um, those units.
Seven hundred bangs has, has windowless bedroom units? I, I didn't, I don't recall them being in three sixteen main.
Yeah, I don't recall three sixteen main.
We didn't get the full plans for seven hundred, this one here.
Yep.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I just feel like the quality of, you know, if we're gonna be providing these, you know, the quality of that visiting space should be as.
It's not true that all bedrooms require windows or at least two methods of egress?
The code requirement requires two means of egress, which is one should be directly to the outside and one should be to the hallway.
There's also ventilation and, and light requirement, but those, you know, can be bet through mechanical means, not by having a window.
Yep.
That's correct.
So, so that's where I'm confused also, nothing to do with this project, with all projects. Two meetings ago, there was the Memorial Drive project and it said, two bedrooms plus den. Three bedrooms, or one bedroom plus den. I said, well then, there's gonna be three bedrooms and it said, oh, no, 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 no. I was told by everybody in the room, can't have a bedroom without a window. So now you can have bedrooms with, with windows.
It's fully code compliant to have a bedroom without a window.
I need clarification from our professionals.
I agree, I agree, cause I, I recall that, I recall that as well.
Yeah, I, I mean, I consulted with the architectural staff and, at my firm and they provided me chapter and verse, multiple versions of the building code, which, you know, there are ways of doing it and they're not particularly a heavy lift. It's just.
So what we approved.
Generally, it's easier to do it the typical way with bedrooms with windows. Um, I don't, I don't know what happened with the nine hundred springboard application as far as the design of that building, you know, the decision and making they used as for us, you know, not doing what these guys are doing, but.
Right, they, for us, they, first they called it a den and I remember that John had asked, well, if that's a bedroom, we need more parking. They said, no, that's a den.
Well, and that's, again, a different threshold, you know, if it's a bedroom, it counts toward parking.
Right.
We're not talking about parking here, we're talking about just whether you need a window.
Right, 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 no, but that's, but that's where it came, that's where it came out in that application. But so.
I agree, yeah.
And they also said, it's not a bedroom because it doesn't.
It doesn't have a window.
Yeah. So, you know, it needs to have a closet and a door and ventilation and light and means of egress, so.
Well, we'll be smarter next time.
I'm sure, I'm sure there's dens that have ventilation and light.
So the, the city does have.
But I'm taking away from this application for this application, I apologize.
So the city does have a property maintenance code, uh, provision, which really kind of affects existing dwellings that says all habitable rooms have to have a window. But that's a local, again, under property maintenance code, I, I can't, we can't do anything with that here as part of zoning and obviously the building code has an end around for that.
I'm not clear. So the property maintenance code says, does need a window? And.
Well, existing, existing needs to have a window, so this is new construction, so.
But once you build it, doesn't have to follow the property maintenance?
No.
Something wrong.
No, you're controlled by the code and by the construction code in terms of new development.
I, but we're here to talk about site plan and I think the artifact of the site plan is creating some of these awkward bedroom situations. The depth of the building being fifty feet from Monroe heading southwards is wider than a typical residential unit would be in a double loaded corridor. And so it creates this situation. Now, part of that could be helped if the bedroom, or the bathroom and the kitchen were slid against that interior corridor wall and then at least you'd have some other opportunities to create that connection to a lighter part of the building, but.
Agreed.
It's not a great, these are not great apartments.
Again, the, the discussion we had was effectively you'd have to take a unit off of each floor.
Yeah.
To get the proper dimensional.
Yeah.
Configurations so that you'd have that kind of exposure.
Right.
And in order to have that many units, then you're adding another floor.
And do I, do I recall at seven hundred main, wait, hold on, do I recall at seven hundred main that you had a kind of light well on the inside of the building?
Not on seven hundred bangs, right?
I'm sorry.
On bangs?
No, we, we never.
There was one that was set in.
But what, we're, we're gonna look at this. Um, we, we hear your comments, we're gonna take a look at this and see whether or not there's something that you can do with it.
Okay.
But just to, one of the reasons why we did not flip the bedroom and the hill. And, and here, did not flip the bedroom to the here, is when you do that, it cannot reach the living room. And once you close that in, the living room becomes a void in space. But the whole idea of having the kitchen and the living room being simple is to help extend that space. So it doesn't look too confined, so, but, you know, it's a cradle, that's what, you know.
You're the first time I saw bedrooms without windows on a whole more tenement to the New York City.
Right.
Well, okay, so can you talk to, so some of the exterior wall, um, like, so on the, where are we, on the east side of the building, that exterior building wall, uh, south of the stair, um, that one bedroom unit has an exterior building wall, but there's no window in that bedroom, uh, other, other end, other end.
No.
Down?
Down, down one.
There you go, right there. So, so.
It's on the front.
But those could as easily be studio apartments with your, I mean, if you just have it as a studio apartment.
Instead of having the living room in the.
And the bedroom and the bathroom and the kitchen are against the corridor wall, everything has light. It's just a, I know that may not be the unit you're looking for, but it's a much better layout.
Okay. And then can you just talk about the, those, um, those units with the little, I guess it's sort of a, is it a patio terrace? There's no, they're just open across the back?
Yes, they're, they're open across the back, with the, you know, it's a slide on, uh, door that you can come up. We have the, we're, we're gonna show some demarcation.
So maybe there'll be a screen panel?
Yes.
So those are just for the individual units? And the main studios affordable?
We're, we're gonna, there are a number of things that we're talking about, we'll come back and play around with it a little bit.
Thank you, appreciate, we appreciate.
See what we can do to get some light in there.
Yeah, I mean, because you just, you set back and you sell it, well, it used to be one, the room.
Okay, but, so that only happens on that second floor?
Yes, coming out of the first floor.
I just wanted to close that.
Oh, we continue.
So A one point three is, you know, off the first floor. Second, which is all time. To the fourth. Which is the, uh, the fifth floor. And on the fifth floor, there's access provided to the roof. Which we are showing of this area, number two second. And, you know, a couple of these units, provided for some units and others that we did not. So for instance, this corner here, it has it, this side, it has it, three dozen. And then over here, we provided space for that. The back ones, having two of them have the access. When you go to the offer, to the roofing, to the balcony, which is A one point five. These are the pop ups that we introduce. And then once you come up here, you'll be able to go outside. Provided values for that some units. And they will not have access to the roof, as indicated before, just the script area.
So there's some sort of little like fence around each patio?
Yeah, there's fence around each one, yeah. This one has a fence, all around, so they are.
And where would the mechanicals be on the roof in relation to where those penthouse units are?
Yes, similar to what we did in three sixteen and seven hundred. This is gonna be a split system, which would mean that we'll have some condensers, the mini, uh, units that will be, that will be planned to be placed on these walls here, to service the units. And then the corridor, the common spaces would be, that will provide a rooftop, which we're gonna put in this area, maybe one here.
So the location, those mechanical units then would be screened from any view from either Monroe or Main Street, am I correct?
Yes, that is, we're far away from there, because we are only providing those units for corridors, you know, corridors, space, common area. The rest of them will be split system, which will be a little catched, you know.
Is that what you're saying, that they?
Yes, yeah, and they, and they have electric, you know, they have.
They're not dark work, it's just.
Yeah, no dark work, just, you know, that's what we need for seven hundred and four, we need for three sixteen, not the other.
So what were you saying about the air, uh, the condensers?
Yeah, I was saying that, um, when you think of rooftop, you need to think of big units on the roof. For this project, we're gonna be using split system, which means they have a, a little condensers mounted on the, on these walls.
Right.
Similar to what we did for seven hundred, we put them on this wall. And then they are blind set, I will run to each of the unit for the night, so it, there's no dark work. But for the common areas, like the corridors, will be required to provide, you know, a rooftop unit. So those rooftop units is what I'm saying, we're, we're gonna locate it and screen it so that it's away from, you know, the Main Street and from this area.
So are we saying that the people that, uh, that are on these patios will be able to hear this?
It would, it would be, uh.
Like the ones that are, not, not the ones that are in the hallways?
Yeah.
But the ones that are like right up against like the different loft?
No, it's very quiet.
You don't hear them.
Yeah, you don't, you know, these are like, it's, it's, like, you know, really nice, you know, and this will be outside also.
Those are the penthouse units, all.
Okay, yes.
No, for the units itself.
Yeah, so, so there are two, there are two separate systems and we utilize and build in mini splits that will serve the individual units, am I correct?
Yes.
So each individual unit would have its own mini split.
Yes.
And the condenser for, say, the first floor units would, uh, apartment one A would be up on the roof, uh, next to the wall. That's not visible from Main Street, correct? Similar to all the other units would have separate mini split condenser that would be on those, attached or fixed to those walls, am I correct?
Yes, yes.
And for the common hallways, that would be a separate system. That would be a, a common, your more common type condenser that would go within the middle of the roof, am I correct?
Yes.
And because the condenser that's gonna serve the common areas is only for a limited space, it's not the apartments. We're not talking a massive condenser, we're talking something a lot smaller, am I correct, including the air, correct?
Yes. So the wall on the roof on those outside walls, not, not the larger packages, it needs you.
Correct, correct.
It is one of the ones, the wall is.
So it'll be like sixty-one condensers on the roof? One, each one condenser, one for each apartment?
But they're, 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 they're splits, so they're actually like these compact units that can attach to the wall.
They look like box fans, it looks like a box fan.
But they're gonna be sixty-one of them.
Yeah.
You know what a floor fan looks like? It's about that size.
It's not like a regular condenser unit.
I'd like to see the dimension of those because.
Yeah, we need, we need something.
We, we can take a picture of one on seven hundred bangs, it's the same type of system, they're up there now.
Well.
And they're not visible from anywhere.
No, no, I, I don't think that that's our concern, is that the visibility, but go ahead, Jim.
Well, you're, you're talking, we're describing something, he's gesturing with his hands, he's saying something, maybe two foot by, by a foot and a half, whatever it is, and I don't know how high. That's not what I am familiar with, is a mini split system. I mean, uh, the condenser I have on my patio is probably, uh, I'd say, two and a half feet high and a foot and a half deep and, uh, somewhere around three and a half foot wide, it's a pretty good sized unit. And, uh.
Well, what we'll do is we'll get the dimensions, we'll also take pictures of what is currently on seven hundred bangs.
Fine.
And it's very compact, sits on the wall.
That's fine, and that there'll be sixty-one of them?
Yeah, seven hundred bangs, you have forty-eight of them.
Right, okay.
There will be groups, groups, or.
That's fine, if we could just, we, if we could get some rendering of some sort that we can see, we can see what that means. Okay.
And the, so then, how is the commercial space ventilated?
It's, it, it will have its own rooftop unit.
It'll have its own rooftop unit as well, okay. Just, I, I wanna go back to the, the patios, cause just to clarify, you said some units have patios and some don't. But does that, it seems from the floor plan that that directly corresponds to the affordable units don't have patios, is that right?
Well, there's two patios provided on, on this side, which is where most of the affordable units are on the lower portion.
The second.
Again, depending on, you know, which, if all the affordable units are stacked, they could be, you know, interspersed with the roof, there are layers of space. So whether the developer decides that the floor, you know, less limited for the affordable unit, that's something more.
Okay, so there may, there is some affordable unit that has a patio?
No, none, um.
No, no, no.
No, not on, the affordable units do not have a patio, is that correct?
Okay, that was my question. Right, it's, so it corresponds, yeah, to the market rate.
A little bit.
Yeah. The stairways are only in that one. All right, and there's nothing in our affordable ordinance or anything that they need to be comparable? Not all of the market rate units have. So that's the equity. While we're on the roof, what, um, did you say what material, what color material, the, just a regular roof portion is gonna be? I'm sorry, I missed it.
The, the roof.
Uh, the, the color of the roofing material, that's.
Well, depending on how, for instance, where we have the patios, we're gonna use some, you know, we're gonna, um, we may try to finish it with wood, that area, but this will just be the regular roof, you know, as, you know, um, we can do TPO or any other type of wood, I don't want, also with that.
You can do a lighter.
When we come back, we're also gonna take a look at whether or not there's the ability to do some green infrastructure on that roof too.
Okay. That's what I was asking, and if not, then a lighter color?
Right, we, we should have some, something here that shows us this, to that level of detail.
Yeah, I'd like to, we're gonna explore some green infrastructure up there too.
So the patios, the fences around the patios, what's the height, what's the material of the fence?
I think it's, where you're doing wood, and then they have about forty.
Yeah, I would venture to guess that it's probably a metal floor, you're talking about on patio fencing, probably metal, black metal slated, slatted.
But it should be here.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying, question's asked, you can add it to the plans and then, uh, tracks material.
Yeah, we'll, we'll call it out.
Okay.
But because part of the testimony was each patio will have a fence around it, which means nobody can be like, run the roof. If it's a forty inch fence, I can, I can run the roof, I can pop a forty inch fence.
I can at this point of my. I can at this point of my.
Well, I'll cheat.
We'll provide that detail.
Okay.
So A one point seven mostly is the ones that you've sent the dimensions on it and box. The shoes, uh, you know, the roof size is. Ten clear to about twelve in some area. And these are all the unit types, A one point eight, it's showing the same thing. Again, this is, uh, showing the unit with the pop-up on the roof. And we are on A two point one, which is the elevation, uh, street elevation, we are in color, this is similar to what, what I'm showing with you guys, like color. And again, the material that's from there. And we are showing again from first floor to second floor is fourteen zero. And then we have a ten nine, and there's ten nine on each floor, which will, may also approximately about eight, 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 nine, seven, eight. Once we get started and all, we'll see.
So you're, so both your, your, your below slightly the allowable height for both these buildings?
Briefing.
Now, if you use the three feet on the ground floor, would you be able to get staffers in those, um, in the parking garage? Or at least some of them to make up your parking deficit?
I don't know, but there's something we'll take a look at.
I would encourage you to look at that, and, um, then the other question I have is how is your garage space going to be then? What do you mean? Mechanically?
Mechanically, yes.
So where is that, uh, can you point out in the, where is the mechanical going to be moved to run that?
Well, what we are going to do is similar to what we're planning to do for three sixteen. The mechanical engineer has not been, because it's just kind of a, a, what we did days, we put, we put, you know.
No, I meant in the garage space, where have you left, where have you left mechanical space?
Oh, you do.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanna understand, make sure that you allocated something for the mechanical handworks.
Yeah, we are providing some hidden utility, you know, space. Again, once we get the mechanical involved, we're gonna, you know, see what, we have to find.
All right, I need to testify, you think that's adequate to handle the mechanical needs for the garage?
Yeah, I believe so, I believe that a system could be, you know, suspended from the deck and all, you know, it's mostly rent on the exhaust.
I mean, what I'd like to do is if we can go to A two point, just wanna go through the remainder of the plans, two point one, just the signage that we have there? Talk about that a little bit?
Okay, so, uh, we have provided a signage here. And the, the rented that we submitted, updated, and when we updated this plan, we're gonna attempt to, you know, avoid that already. So that, you know, it's more visible from the street as opposed to up here. And, you know, we, again, from that rendering, we wanted to, you know, use this wall for that, to amass the building. Um, you know, in that corner of, of, of the space. Um, we, there's on the comments, we can put that down and see what wants to be good. If we revise in the serial edition, we can try to cooperate that and see what's, you know, what we got.
Right, does the board? Find the height of the sign offensive, or do you think it works in that location coming from yourself on main?
Just run the word offensive, disagreeable.
It's nine thirty.
And there, there's also additional signage that's being proposed on the stod, on Monroe Street, am I correct?
Yes.
Can you, while, while we're on this, um, can you just explain the west, west elevation, what are we looking at there? Because it looks like those four sections are what's on main, correct?
Yes.
And what's to the right of that, what is all that?
That's the, that's the building in all the way in the back.
So that's part of the building, that gray section is part of the building?
Yes.
So why can't we have windows?
Because it's on the property line.
Okay, so we're not allowed to have windows on property lines?
Yes.
Right, so that's why, since they're right up to the property line.
Oh, so maybe we have to move the property line? Not move the property line, but maybe change the building.
They did provide a setback to the four units on the second floor. Five units on the second floor.
Yes, yes.
The whole thing just shifts, type of that way.
Can I ask you a question while we're on?
Go for it.
If you may, if I may, so that's actually the page I was gonna ask you to go through. The rear yard, is the rear yard closest to your thumb? That, that line there, is the rear? So that's the rear?
That is correct.
Is that, is that right?
Yes.
I, I mean.
There's multiple.
You have one side, one rear, and two fronts. I think it's dealer's choice as to which is the rear, which is the side.
I mean, the reason why I ask the question is there's a ten foot setback for the rear. But if someone was gonna, going to develop next to this property, would that be their side?
It depends.
Now, I think just the way the lot's current is, and remember, we have five, five lots we have in here.
So like the limits, oh, that's why.
If we look at the existing site. So existing site, you have one, two, three, four lots, so on two through five, clearly it's gonna sound, it's a rear lot.
But.
One is a corner.
It's a merging lot. But you're saying it's, it's your zoning lot is separate from your tax laws?
I'm, I'm stalled, all right? So when, and keep in mind, when we're done with the property, all right? Six and seven are still to the east, so it would be on this one line that I pointed to would be the side, the side yard.
Right, so lot six, which is not your property, would, it would be the side yard matching up, and they can build right to the line?
That is correct.
No.
Right?
Their property's not in the redevelopment plan.
That's right, great.
So they would have to have a setback too?
This, what happened was, we got an amendment to the Main Street redevelopment plan, because only, I believe, lot one was part of it. So we got an amendment and included lots two through five as part of the Main Street redevelopment plan, so you're correct. So that exists, six and seven not still.
Those are R one or R two or something.
So if your parking was, was to the line, but your upper stories were set back a little bit, you would be able to provide windows?
Home of the pay, look at that.
And then the question.
If you pull these back, that's what you're saying, right?
The question of which is your, of how far your rear property line extends, does it, if you're calling the easterly edge a side yard, then every south facing edge is a rear yard?
Right, the whole L, the words, Monroe is your front.
Both the south part of the skinny part? And the south part of the back.
Long part, where they have the corridor.
That's all, yeah.
That would also be a side yard, the backyard would quite be a front.
I'm sorry.
I mean, I don't know if you move the toes, right? Yeah, I think.
I, I think the way I looked at this was, Main Street's the front, Monroe is the front. The east side of the L is a side, south side of the L is a rear, and then the piece that's, um, the inside of the L, basically that's a side and a side.
So three sides, two fronts, and a rear? Two fronts, you're looking at?
Two fronts, two sides, and a rear.
Well, there's, there's six, there's six total, right?
Yeah, so. Front, front, side, side, rear.
Okay.
So you, so there's a requirement for a setback along the corridor, like where you just pointed to a corridor? I think you can.
If Monroe is a front, everything opposite is.
I think everything on the long part of the L should be a side, on the interior side.
But, but a side can't face a front?
It's not facing a front, it's an interior.
If Monroe is a front.
But on the interior side, it's a side.
Yeah, I get it, see, I know why. And this is the front, and that's your side.
If, if Monroe is a front, then every line that is parallel to the front is a rear.
Yeah, but you have main that's a front also. So then, if main's a front, then that would be a side of it.
And I think because that's an interior lot line adjoining a front facing street.
There's the diagram, but it's.
It's a fence.
Which creates a very new property, which lends itself to the scene value.
I thought you were bringing in a planner.
We are.
I'm just gonna make a, a comment aside from whatever the side, our question, comment, but I find that the, um, that you've done a lot to make the Main Street and Monroe side, uh, meet the street, you said you did a lot to kind of, you know, like, split up the mass of the long part, but I find the other two sides very inhospitable to the neighborhood. Um, and I don't necessarily think that a mural is the solution there, it will still be a very large blank wall. And given the visibility, I just think something more needs to be done in order to meet the neighborhood on the east and on the south.
There, there's a building here.
Understood.
One and a half story building.
Understood.
It's still a huge blank wall.
It is, no, I, I totally agree with you. From the entire neighborhood to the, right, to the east, they'll just be seeing a blank wall.
So, remember, the wall that you would have here, you would have a building.
Yep.
In front of it.
Yep.
Well, shouldn't it have something?
But even if there were a slight setback, as you've done for the front apartment, you could put windows on that east facing side, which does meet the neighborhood, I mean, that's, that's kind of an important wall for how you're integrating into the neighborhood.
That's a, that's a great point. The, we offset back three feet, five feet, when, curve wise, when you offset three feet or five feet, you have maybe ten, fifteen percent opening that you can put on that wall based on building. So just moving it back doesn't mean that we, all the units will have windows.
Right.
You know, some percentage that it could allow you, building could allow you to go.
Percentage of what?
Of, of, if it's zero to, zero to three, I think it's five percent or something.
Five percent of what?
Of the overall amount of the facade.
Right.
So by the time you calculate it, you try to get, you know, five percent of the same. For the whole facade. So you get, you know, so what I'm saying is, even if you move it back, it's not like all of this will happen.
Right, but even like you have on the, I'm gonna say on the corner unit, that's set back slightly, the northeast corner, you have a small window. I mean, even that makes a difference in terms of.
We'll, we'll take a look at, but keep in mind, ultimately, some, you know, we'll take a look at it, see if we can play it a little bit.
Yeah, even that size window.
Somebody can rebuild the building.
Totally understood.
And you're covering that up.
Understood, yeah.
Well, this is the, the area, that's that outdoor space that we talked about, the units, you know, the four units here. And that's that black wall that we have where the corridors behind it. And that's another view of the, just also. This is A two point two. Uh, A two point three, uh, this is a, an indication of some of the openings that I spoke about. This is of the decorative fans that we're gonna, you know, just to go back.
Does that look like glass behind it?
No, it's like a metal.
Yeah, well, like a white, white.
These are just open.
Well, it's open?
Yeah, yeah.
So weather gets in the roof?
Yeah, you know, it does, you know, okay. You see that?
Similar to three hundred, three sixteen name, what was that, correct? Decorative panels.
So that's where the light will start?
Correct.
Well, potentially, but remember now, you know, this finished floor, this is high open off, so the, the, the light from the headlights will be given down here.
No, you're talking about the overhead lights.
The overhead lights is one, one hundred and twenty percent.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, but aren't these sort of in the ceiling?
Yeah, they are, I mean, you're, you're gonna have a little bit of a glow up, but you're not gonna have much.
Did you say like the temperature of the light given the garage as well too, is that twenty-seven hundred K?
That was the light type C, Greg, is that? Sorry. Hang on, I'll look.
Is that on the outdoor?
Yes, C is, that's the garage lighting, is twenty-seven hundred in that note. It's, no, it's only twenty-seven hundred, so it'll be the nice little candle glow through those little piercings in the, in the panel, filigrees. Yeah, notes five and six.
One thing I just wanted to point out, when you're looking at the building, you're, you have two buildings that are existing over there. Also in some field, another building that's gonna have to cover the path of that, since they'll find that concern.
I think what we'll do is when we update the drawings, the trash is still where, on board is there, but that will actually block our building, so you will not see it there. So that's, uh, that's all.
That's our presentation for tonight, we will be coming back, obviously taking the board's comments into account. Um, with certain revisions to the plans, uh, at the next year.
Does anyone have any, want to have any, uh, comments before we close up?
Yeah, I should like.
Does it remain any questions regarding this?
Going back to drawing A one point one, why is the door to the mechanical room, the electrical room there, coming from the trash room rather than from the garage area? Just seems to me that you don't wanna have a, an interior room accessed through another room.
This room here?
Your parking space.
Parking, because of parking, because of, of.
So you're, you're gonna have access to your electrical room through another room?
Yes, it's a, it's a maintenance process, and he's gonna be maintaining the building, so. That's because the, again, the, because of the spison of the, the art space, if you moved it to try to create this spison, then, uh, we'll not be able to have the, to start parking.
And in order to access the eastern stairwell, you've gotta go outside?
That's on the Egress though, only, we're probably the storage, you know.
I think you need to take a look at that again.
The which?
The access doors in the garage area, the whole, look, all the doors. You, look at, look at where they're located, and look where the access is really coming from. You can't access the stairwell from the garage, you can't access the mechanical room from the garage. The doors to the.
Easterly exterior stair.
You're not supposed to.
You're not supposed to.
It's a, it's a fire.
Yeah, it's a, it's, it's emergency Egress. It has to go direct, inside, it has to go directly out to the street. It has to go direct, and say, it has to go directly out to the street.
Instead, to the, uh, near, near Main Street, you can get access that we, we have to.
That's the western stairwell, but there's no access.
If one, yeah, yes, there's no access to it, because it's strictly for egress.
That's your emergency egress, goes right out to the street.
So, um, Donna, are there, what are the requirements within the, the redevelopment about, like, material color or palette, or is there any guidance?
So it references U E Z design guidelines, which has some guidance, um, and then the specific, uh, requirements of Main Street, uh, just hang on, so reference about color.
I think my concern is that you've done some very high quality projects in sound, it looks lovely. However, I think the kind of repetition of the color palette and material is becoming ubiquitous, and some variation would be, from my perspective, I think a little more welcome, out of the brown, brown, gray, black palette, um, just to zhuzh it up a little bit.
Maybe it's more purple?
Something.
Not green. Not palest of the elements green. Um, so on page seven of our report, the, um, there is a provision about color. Colors of your building shall be harmonious with nearby buildings. You don't wanna have sort of two or three, as reference, there you go, brick. Uh, attached elements should be white, you know, it's the traditional, you know.
I'm, I'm just concerned that, you know, with, with Mr. Saxon being such a prominent member of the development community within a short, you know, small area, that the style of your building sort of become not that.
It's the Saxon style?
The, sure, that's, oh, yeah, the Saxon style, um.
Yeah, we'll, we'll come back to it.
Yeah. I would just encourage you to find some accents of not brown.
I just wanted to make a comment, if, uh, since you're coming back, that the, when you come back, if you can just include some elements, I know it said in the report that the green building elements were not included, but if you, if you are doing things like considering a light colored roof, to let us know that, or, um, I know the comment was made that green infrastructure couldn't be incorporated because of the site being built out.
We're gonna look to see what we can.
Yeah, I think if there, I mean, it's not an either, always an either or, so I think there's elements that could be incorporated, and it's not always accommodating all the stormwater, but if there's things you can do to minimize what goes into the, um, there's options, there's other options that could be considered, so it, I would like to hear what was looked at and if anything could be accommodated.
Also, when you come back, uh, I'd like you to take a look at C C H's report, starting on page seventeen, ten point zero relevant land use policies, and it continues on to page eighteen. And I'd like to have you address, or at least be able to comment on.
We'll have a play.
Does anybody else have any, any other questions that they would like to pose before we break?
I have a curiosity question. About your surf closet. Would surfboards fit in the elevator?
You're looking at. I shouldn't say I have tried it, but.
Okay. Just wondering, I mean, you have them on every floor.
A longboard or a shortboard, that's the extent that I think.
I'm just.
This is not the one.
So, yeah, is it a surfboard closet? What is that?
Maybe it's for wetsuits.
Yeah, it's a, it's a place for to stop, you know.
Beach stuff?
Beachy type of stuff.
Okay.
Sand.
Or, or a boogie board, a closet.
I love it. Don't take it with that.
Anything else besides, uh, before we, uh, we break, before we'll go to public in a second, just I wanna make sure that our, our professionals and our, and the planning board members are okay? Okay, let's open up to public questions.
Uh, I'm not sure who this is aimed to, but, so the, the lot just east of this, somebody say it's R one? It's an R one zoning?
Yes.
So there could potentially be a house with just a five foot story gray wall?
Well, there is a house.
There's a house there already?
Yeah.
Okay, so they, if this get built, got built, there would just be a five story wall, gray wall on their property line?
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess my question then is, could that be made more, uh, hospitable to the house next door, to the lot next door? Which I know is what you've all been talking about, but it seems kind of important, I didn't realize it was an R one lot. Uh, and then my other question is, kind of going off Eric said, if, is there any way to make this less gray? Cause just looking at the rendering, it does seem very gray, so something?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you for your questions. Okay, I know that we are, uh, we'll go over the report once you come back.
Yes.
Again, with some modifications. Uh, our next available date is to carry to September twelfth is our next open date, which is actually our next date outside of the first, August first.
Very good.
The next one is September twelfth.
Yeah.
So can I get a, a motion to carry to September twelfth with no further notice? Move to carry.
Second floor.
Okay, so we have Yvonne was first, Jim was second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you, thank you for being ready, even though you went sooner, which is good. Um, can I get a motion to adjourn? All right. Anyone, everyone in favor? Anyone opposed?
Ah, silence.